Yep.
Mr. Bennington.
Here.
Mr. Anderson.
Eric.
Ms. Minkin.
Here.
Ms. Lera. Ms. Roland Miller.
Here.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Ms. Minkin?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Roland Miller?
Yes. The next agenda, our first item is to welcome back to Pittsburgh School Board meetings and determine the media order of the 3.11 levy communication time.
It's good to be at my very first official meeting. I like to start the meeting reminding us of our mission, which is ensure all students achieve their greatest potential, to remind us of our vision, which is where cashing drives exemplary education, and we do this by inspiring our students in the portrait of a jacket, thoughtful problem solvers, purposeful communicators, respectful collaborators, persistent innovators, lifelong learners, and empathetic citizens. This is accomplished because we celebrate the jacket way in all of our schools. So I want, I thought it was important, and you'll see me do this actually every time I speak in a meeting, I think it's important to start with our mission and put students first. You'll see when I brand anything, there will always have our mission statement on it, ensure all students achieve their greatest potential. It keeps us student-focused, which is what we're here to do. I think it's more important this morning than ever to remember that we're student-focused. This district did a very difficult job last year in cutting the first six million, right, and then heading in and then kind of beg borrow and deal with the next seven million to give us through this year. Now we're into that. Now we're, now we're into the point where we're going to have to make some very difficult decisions if by any chance we're not successful in November. So, Mr. Dorr, please move to the slide, please. So I wanted to share with you a timeline, and this is, this is here for your discussion, that we thought we would kind of lay out for everyone. We met with Labor Relations on the teachers union side last night. We kind of shared this timeline with them, let them know that it would be subject to change after working with all of you this morning. So obviously, this is Thursday, September 4th, and we are sharing the timeline for levy discussions at the work session. I really would like to nail down some additional meetings where we'll be out. Of course, I'll be out of the buildings, but I think nailing down some meetings where we can get a levy roadshow going would be appropriate, and I think it's important to have a virtual meeting too, so that those that can in town can also do that. Today, Susan and I have already, Ms. Roland Miller and I, already have a meeting set up, and so we'll meet to work on some dates and times that we can give out to all of you later. And I realize that after ready, we'll read everything, but whenever we can have more members present, I think it's important. On the 8th, I will send my Monday message to staff, and if this timeline is approved by the board today, I will include the timeline and also announce all the roadshow dates. So I'm going to ask them to pretty quick turn around on these dates, and again, we want to turn it to all of them, but if you just get the feeling calendars, I think that's important.
We're looking not for official approval, but a nod.
You're right.
A nod, that's it. So we're not looking for a vote on this.
We don't need a vote.
Just that the board is comfortable with this timeline. Unless there's another discussion, you want to move some things around.
We don't need a vote, for sure. On the 10th, we'll be meeting as an administrative team meeting to review the public presentation that we plan to give with the ATM, and also get final feedback in the morning. So at that point, they've been working diligently on a reduction list, and we've been massaging that. We have a good target number, we're pretty close to that. But I think there's a couple of things that, as an outsider, when I came in, I asked a couple of questions about things that I saw that were missing, in my mind. So I just had people investigating those to see if we could maybe add those to a list to be able to take something else off the list. So we've got administrators working on those. Those will be solidified by the 10th.
And I think the other note is we're being kind of very close-chested with that list right now, because there's people's lives that potentially would be affected. And obviously, we want the board to be able to see that, but we also want to be careful about not having anything leaked out until people are actually, just know your position could be reduced if the levy fails. But we don't want them to hear about some presentation or some link. So let's calendar hope, I think, works to get the board up to speed on that, but at the same time, keep it close to our chest until we can unveil it publicly on the board meeting on the 22nd.
What was the, what was the guidance that we provided to the board, where we focused on? Do you provide any criteria for developing the list?
I don't know how, Mr. I, I, I don't know how much the hospital felt. I felt like we did not get much guidance. Okay, now, we, we, we obviously are going back to Katie's earlier point, obviously, the reductions, all the buildings have looked at is trying to minimize the impact on students. Of course, at this point, we're beyond that. So the question is, what, going back, what do we have to do, and then what can we, stuff that we want to do but can't, right? And so I think it's, you know, and the, the, the real, the real question is what the right number is. And I'll talk about that in my presentation a little bit.
But outside of Mr. Dorr, back to Mr. Anderson's question is that, I mean, I, I think there's this tension between what was asked for, what we shared, and if there's additional, because I, I felt like we did have the discussion that was broader. We weren't asked to do specifics purposely, I thought, so that to say that we didn't provide enough input.
I didn't mean it that way.
Okay.
I didn't mean it that.
I just want to say, I feel like we provided the input that was requested.
Yeah, I don't, I don't mean it that way. I didn't feel like we were given hard dog raves. We were given some general feedback, and so I, I take back what I'm, I, I would take it like that. And I think rightly so. The board didn't say, hey, look at these chunks, but you gave us a broad guidelines.
So what I'd like to. Do some prioritizing, you know, these would probably be the areas we'd recommend from a kind of focus area. I assume that's what was passed down.
Well, I'd like, so what I'd like to hear is to put a pin in this, because I think this is an important part of the conversation, but I'd also like to make sure that we talk through this timeline and we get that process to understand then if there's more input needed where that can happen. So.
That's right. Do you want to add anything more, because you've been working with these things?
Yeah, so one of the things, you know, administrators and directors kind of had a target number to, to look through percentage-wise within their budget, and really prioritizing like compliance and safety. So what are the things we're required to do? What are the things to keep students safe? And so those were kind of like the starting points, and then looking at, you know, ultimately, like what's not required to, to have to implement. Of course, obviously, like instructions, student support, I mean, those things are all certainly valuable, but there's a limited number of things we, only really a limited number, number of things we don't have to do. And so it's, it's really, was kind of looking through that lens. And then also, that student experience, you know, what types of things aren't required, but maybe have a bigger impact to student experience, but it's really challenging. I mean, there's just things that, again, there's only a limited number of things as a district we're not required to implement. There's truly not a lot of quote-unquote fluff in terms of what makes us us, so, but that's really what we were looking at, and.
Well, one of the guiding documents I noticed, as I was looking through some of the materials that you used for one of the statements for high school graduation, appears where students experience something way beyond that. They, they experience a very rich experience through foreign language, relatives, and those are things that are not required. And when we're trying to cut over six million dollars, between six and seven million dollars, Mr. Dorr, we'll continue with that conversation. You're going to cut into those things deeply. You just talk, there's just no, eighty percent of our, of any, of any school's budget, his personnel, so, I mean, he turned the lights off. When I grew up, they actually did that. They actually turned the lights off, they turned the heat off for several weeks and sent us home, because there was no money, and there was no energy at that time either. So, but we can't do that now. So we're required to have kids in school, we're required to keep them safe. So these will be, these will be deep and significant cuts.
Can we walk through this timeline?
Yep, I'm sure that's okay. But, well, the next step is, the next step is that we're going to talk to this OPEC group that was kind of assembled. This will be a conversation more about feedback and how we're going to share. It won't, they won't see a reduction list, because you will not have seen the reduction list, and certainly, the first step here would be for the board of education, just, you know, to be discussing that lesson. But we do want, you know, I'm new here, so it's good to have some counsel on, boy, this is something that didn't go well last time, this, you know, we think it can be handled differently. So we're going to get some feedback from them on the 10th as well. The 10th is going to be a very busy day. Starts with ATM, we have OPEC, and then Mr. Anderson and Ms. Lera will be here for personnel also that day, and they'll get that during, that, that book and that list that we're working, that we worked on in ATM. So they'll, they'll get that list there. Can we move to the next slide, please? Then on the 11th, we'll be meeting with PEA, the OBC presidents, to talk with them a little bit more deeply about some of the reductions that we're talking about. On the 12th, in the buzz, I'll provide an outline of the feedback that we received throughout the week. You'll get a very detailed recap of the conversations that we've had. This is something that will be called throughout the week. Again, on the 18th, Mr. Bennington, Ms. Minkin, I will see, we will see you for finance. That will be a loud book at that list before we actually are talking to people on the 19th and 22nd. One of the pieces of feedback that I did receive here loud and clear is that we can't, we need to be careful about sitting, meeting, even with people that are clearly on the list. Sometimes it will be a program, you know, you can't possibly, you know, you, you can't possibly take into account all of that, but when there is clearly a teacher or a staff member, it is very clear to us that that's the person who wants it needed to be done at the end of the day, not at the beginning of the day. And that will take some work to get done. We will attempt to get those done on the 19th by the end of the day, so that they're aware that their names, their names, that their positions will appear at the board meeting in one place. If we're not hearing it for the first time at a board meeting, we'll wrap up any of those conversations that we weren't able to get to on Friday. On Monday, we'll board the board meeting, control director, supervisor meeting with the board correctly. And then on Monday, obviously, we'll present the recommendations to the board for those potential levy reductions. So that's kind of the way we plan to roll out here, and that's up for your discussion. And you might want to wait until after the treasurer's report to have that discussion, so that you get the full picture. But thanks certainly for helping me anything out.
We're, we're being very careful with this. We could email you the information, but then it becomes public pressure.
Which is why I think that the committee meetings are going to be great, to be able to sit with you and just be able to kind of walk through those things, so.
Should we open for discussion, or should we do?
I think you want to talk about the timeline. My, my part of it, I'm not going to give you the timeline at all, so that's, that's really up to the board here.
Is there anything that's not sitting while we've got timeline?
And by the way, we, the other thing we can do is brief you individually.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right, so we've got time set up, obviously. Personnel committee is, is not open to public, so we can be a lot more candid there. Financial has to be somewhat measured, but individually, we can sit down if you want, we can talk through, through some of these things. Though obviously, we don't want you to be surprised on the 22nd, once you had a chance to digest it, and, and know that it's been thought, you know, thought through. And the other thing is, we want this earlier than we did last year. And again, and I think the other guiding principle is whatever we commit to, we plan on doing, right? I mean, I think we got some criticism a little bit. We brought some things back now justifiable, right? But we did pretty much everything we considered to do, with a few of the settlements that we brought back. And this is, this is going to be tougher.
Is there going to be anything to walk back this time?
Yeah.
I was going to say, Kevin, I was going to say, the timeline, I think it's well thought out. It's going to work with the time zone on our side. Slack time is what we need to be done. And then, yeah, to your point, I was also going to say, as difficult as last year was, and it was difficult, this feels like it's going to be amplified because the guiding principle is to try and keep it out of the classroom last time. This time, that's not right. So those conversations, those need to be conversations. It's harder this year.
Yeah, so are we, do we, so within the timeline though, where are we aligning on the number that we're targeting? Because it was four and a half, and then I heard sixty-seven.
Well, I'm going to talk about that next day.
Yeah.
Four, yeah, the four and a half was our original target. Dr. Anderson and I have talked about whether that's the right number. I think it should be higher, and I'll show you why. But in the end, I mean, you know, we're going to take your, take your guidance on that, and so.
Do we want to, so before we move into the forecast and the amount, do we want to go back up to the conversation that's going on with the ATM about the cuts and any guidance that the board wants to provide to them? Is that really the thing that's happening? And, and again, by the time the list gets to us, that, it's going to be hard to walk back, so if you say, I don't know, you're cutting the wrong category or this priority, this strategic plan is going to be more, something like.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to have a line on what that direction or what those guidelines are, just because if, so, a bunch of scenarios, so if it comes back and we've done absolutely no cuts to extra regulars, that would be a problem, right? But are we also looking at, if we don't cut extra regulars, do they just go to a fully pay-to-play where it's got to be fully funded by participants? And what is that, how are we thinking about those types of scenarios within the buildings? Or, you know, a lot of times you say we're going to find a way to reduce by ten percent, just go through and say, okay, well, ten percent, and see what the numbers look like. Where there was a conversation about busing, you know, out of, you know, seven hundred thousand out of either of the numbers is a big percentage of the total number, is that part of the guidance? Not part of the guidance? How's that flowing through? Like, I don't know.
What's different with this proposed conversation than what we have had last?
I guess the question would be is, was that the guidance that was provided to the buildings, and should we expect that the results of the impact to be in line with that?
So maybe what we're looking for, I, I, I think it's difficult because the, that guidance is mostly about high school, elementary schools cutting, but I know we're asking the high school this time probably to cut a higher percentage just because they have more of the non-mandatory requirement, you know, elementaries kind of cut what they could, other than boosting class size. So I, I guess maybe what we're looking for is to hear back sooner rather than later, if, obviously not today, is what are those priorities, say, at, at elementary, HPI, junior high, high school? Where, where, how are they thinking through those? Because I do think last time that was a little unclear to us about what the picking order is.
We'll give you an update. We'll provide an update to all before, before the ATM. Before we actually meet them. I think we've gathered a pretty good prioritized list. They've been going through it very thoughtfully. Like I said, I, there wasn't much other than permanent from outside perspective, just me asking a couple of questions that I think had been on the table in the past and just weren't, and I think they need to be. So you'll have to care about those in covering the buzz and also over the course of the next couple of days, is to have those conversations, so.
I mean, did you want to have a conversation about high school busing?
No, no, no.
Well, we had the general conversation, right, at the board meeting. We provided general priorities, but we didn't get any specifics. I think the, now we're getting into a timeline where we're going to have a list of cuts coming back. I think it's a, just a level of affirmation of, we took your input, this is what we provided to the building administrators to consider within their strategies, and then what we expect to see on the 22nd should hopefully be aligned with that, because we don't, to what you said, Susan, is to get into the meeting on the 22nd and be like, oh, wait a minute, this isn't, we don't agree with these cuts, or we're at the wrong area.
You're, you're seeing that in the meeting.
And I think, I think you'll, we, at least, obviously, there's individual items that you may be uncomfortable with, but I think philosophically.
Well, yeah, the philosophy is a key part. I have no interest in picking things. It's more from a general guidance standpoint.
I think at this point, yeah, to communicate that strategy is in each of the buildings, and if they look at that, that would be helpful for us to then understand that list as it's presented through the committees.
And our hope is that we have feedback. I mean, we're obviously on the 22nd, you've seen it, and so we know what we want to do.
Grandy kind of mentioned, one of the things that I, I can't share without kind of disclosing, you know, too many things ahead of when it's really more finalized, is we actually started last spring going to state minimum. What are the state minimum requirements in different areas, like for high school graduation, special education, class sizes? You know, what, what levels does PE a requirement for? Like, looking at all of those things, starting with the state minimum, and then, once we had the target, walking, like, kind of walking that back. So if this is a state minimum, and we now have a target of what we need to reduce, let's look through the lens of, okay, principals, what do you safely need to operate your building that you would want to walk back from state minimum, you know, and then, okay, obviously, like, compliance-wise, you know, what needs to be in place? And then, of course, you know, instructionally, you know, what needs to be in place to give students that, that best footing, and kind of like walking it back from that based on the target, is kind of where we started. It's really challenging. It's really challenging. There's a lot of different opinions on, on what's important, but again, this is, this is a lot of money. There's not a lot of, there's just not a lot of extra things that you don't have to do, but also kind of looking at, you know, is there a way to spread out, kind of, you know, or, or reduce some of the damage to certain programs without completely eliminating or not? So kind of looking at those things. But, I mean, the reality is, even with doing that, there's going to be less opportunities, and, and for, for kids, there's just going to be. You can't cut this amount of money and not have it impact the classroom. It's not, it's just not possible, so.
Students that have experienced legacy programs here are going to see, are going to see soon, if they don't walk away from the program, things that have just been here, and exist in these major relationships. So this will be very difficult.
Well, let's talk about the target number, especially if that's fluctuating everywhere right now. So, Mr. Dorr.
And we're going to be patient with this. We're going to get a long way, we actually get to toward the end, because, so, laugh, it's, I don't know, I should say, it's, it's August review, and it's not really a five-year forecast anymore. I'll talk about it more. It's actually the current year plus a three-year forecast. And just a reminder, this is, this was originally, the forecasts were by law set up to make sure we have a conversation about long-term financial planning, and it's a, it's a basis for our force of twelve certificate, which says we're able to pay contracts. We have to say, hey, we've got enough money to pay this contract out. And then Department of Education, if they order, use this information to identify adverse districts. And now there is an additional answer to this conversation. And the bottom line is, it's been set up as a way to justify tax collections and our cash balances. It's a, it's a, and so the structure has gone beyond just financial planning to some other, what do I want to say, agendas. So again, I mean, you guys have been through this a couple of times, Chris is not, but just remember, this is a snapshot for today. In fact, I was tweaking on it yesterday a little bit. It's based on a set of assumptions. That's what I'm going to really share with you. And of course, we know state budgets out of biennium, and it's always a work in progress. And with, with a, with a new statute, it's going to even be more a work in progress, but you'll really get updates every month on this. It's just, I don't always change the forecast. And then, of course, out on E W site, there's lots of information, and all those are, are here. Let me just talk about timeline real quick, because sometimes we've got to step back and look at the big picture. In January, at the, for the, at the organizational meeting, before, before we have a tax budget hearing, and then, then the board approves the tax budget. That essentially is, hey, county, here's what we're going to spend over the next eighteen months, please collect the taxes, okay? In February, then, now, I have to give an update on the three-year forecast. So what used to be the November update will now be in February, essentially, okay? Instead of getting to May, new forecast in May, we're getting an update in February, and August is actually the new forecast. So it shifts the whole, whole timeline. In March, the board approves the tax rates that the county has put out there. Most of the time, traditionally, that tax rate approval is a rubber stamp, because we don't sit there and go, hey, county, we think you're wrong, because they're going to collect everything that they can. And, and in this county, they'll continue. Right now, with our current tax budget commission, Matt A. Stride and James Spurrow, and let's see if Paul gets elected to judge or not, Paul Dobson, but, you know, they're, they're not, they're not politically bent on tax like some other counties are. You know, they're, they're supportive. And then we start our budgeting in March, April, and May. That's why, in March, I start getting things out to the buildings and the directors, and then April and May, I work with them on their budgets. And then those budgets roll up to appropriations. So we start with budgeting, and then budgets roll in appropriations. So in June, you approve the current fiscal file of permanent appropriation, and then you, you approve a temporary appropriation for the next fiscal year started. Now, in August, we'll do a three-year forecast, which is actually the current year appropriation plus the next three years. That's the difference. So the current year is not supposed to be a forecast, it's supposed to be appropriation. And, and that has an important distinction, because philosophically, for some treasurers, those two appropriations and forecasts are two different things, right? I may ask you to appropriate more than I think we're going to spend, so I don't have to ask, right? So now it's important, those, my numbers are always fairly close. I just got to make sure they're evenly close. They don't have to be exact, but they have to be close enough. And then in September, you approve the current fiscal year of permanent appropriation by the end of September. So what I'm going to do this month, they're doing this to October to do the forecast, but it really doesn't matter. I'll explain why. So on the 22nd, I'm going to ask the board to approve the forecast and the permanent appropriations, and we can talk about more finance too. So the impact of an August forecast, just so you know, we don't have official enrollment numbers until October. So I don't know, and I'll talk about that and I'll get to my assumptions. I'm making some assumptions about enrollment, but I don't know what the funded enrollment is. I know what our backsides and seats are, because Patty Har's work, and we, we have that, but that doesn't necessarily, it's proportional to our funded, but I don't know exactly particularly if it's changed to high school. And the other thing is, obviously, we know what the levy results are. So we're going to do a forecast in August and not update until February, and of course, we have the levy in between. All right, so let me just remind them where we are. So we did a May forecast, and I always look at the bottom line. Now, with this new, so the August forecast and the May forecast, we've shifted a year, right? So just so you know, when we look at these things, and I'm not going to go through and compare everything from May to August, but I want to compare a couple of things. In May, I forecasted this year deficit spending five point nine million. We have a, a new cash balance of nineteen million, which I'll, we'll get to the day, two cash days later. The updated forecast has about four hundred thousand more deficit, and that's just because of things I found in budgeting. I've talked a little bit about that. We still end up better cash balance-wise, because we ended up last year better cash balance-wise. Okay? And so, and again, looking at the bottom line, and comparing the same years, we end up, even with this forecast, right now, we end up a little bit better than we did in May. So if you look at twenty-nine as a benchmark, we're twenty-six point eight million deficit, we're at twenty-two point five. Obviously, we, we can't be there legally, but that's just kind of, and this is before levy, okay? This is all before levy.
Which May, twenty-five forecast, is that, is that the one that was presented in?
Well, that's actually, the, the May, yeah, that was what was actually presented in May.
Okay, do you even want to check your twenty-five numbers, that because they're identical to your actual result?
They should be. Because what happens is.
Your May forecast would be equal to your final actual.
It's way, the, the, yeah, because that's why if you look at the, we do that in May, okay. We do that in May. Okay, that's why the software works is that once the year is finalized, it rolls it rolls it rolls off.
Gotcha. Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to focus on August, where we are today. So again, you guys have you've seen this before. We're good the next two years. This is without any new money and this is without any additional reductions. If this holds true, we'll end this year eighty nine true cash days and we'll end. Next fiscal year at forty five. The four and a half million, where that number came from is gets that forty five true cash days to sixty. Okay, our minimum. And so that's where Dr. Anstett and I are discussing whether or not that's the right number, that maybe we should target higher than that. Because literally that four and a half million squeaks us by another year. And so that we should look for a higher target. First of all, there's no guarantee we shoot for six, we'll get exactly six. But also that gives us a little bit more room because sixty true cash days really is our. Our hard minimum, right? So that's kind of where that four and a half. So we can have that discussion. Again, I'm going to come back with this at the end. So just so just hope that that makes sense to you. That four and a half was not just pulled out of the air. It got us to that sixty true cash days. So again, this forecast has no restoration, eliminate staff or programs. We'll go on fiscal watch in the in year three. And and we're talking that four and a half million keeps us at sixty days in this week to twenty seven without further without additional levy. Okay. With the levy, with the eleven million dollar levy, this is what the true cash days look like. So again, and again, when we talk about this, we we're good for twenty seven, twenty eight, you know, twenty nine is far enough out. It's a new biennium. It's going to look a little bit. Harry for that lack of a better term. And obviously fiscal year thirty, we'd be doing, we'd be doing something, right? We're going to be, we're going to be back on the ballot or there are other reductions along the way. So just to put that in perspective, the, you know, the levy ask is it buys us a couple of years, which is what we wanted. And there's no and and there's no restoration of limiting staff or programs with with the levy. And that's that questions come up with people is this keeps us where we are today. So just a couple, so I'm going to talk about revenue. Just a reminder, sixty nine percent of our our revenue comes from local sources, you know, real estate, public utilities income. And then twenty six percent from from the state. At this point, and this year, you'll see our state funding goes up because it changes in the in the in the in the because of a couple of things, namely enrollment growth. We get a bump because we've had enrollment growth over the last five years and we're a high performing district. We lose that high performance with this funding. Okay, so let's talk about revenues. I'm going to go line by line, but just I'm going to be real quick unless you stop me. Because there's just just so you know, right now, one of the changes in this forecast from May is remember, there's lots of legislation out there to change the calculation of the floor. I've taken those out. We don't know what's going to happen. Twenty oh four is still in there as has been currently defined by law. Which means we're at the floor with a some levy on top of it. That could change. So just so you know, so that's a little bit more optimistic than than the May forecast. One reason why our results, you know, cash balance is a little bit better. And the big assumption is twelve percent valuation increase in twenty six. I've talked on that, Australia, Australia. On that, that's probably a little bit low. On that, but. I kind of feel like that's a good spot, particularly knowing that there could be some. Other property tax legislation that's going to impact that. So it's kind of a, you know, pick your poison at this point on that. Hopefully, the board's okay with that with those. But so you do see some revenue growth and that's because we're at the floor. So if that changes. That could change. PP, Candel, Perp, Perp, uh, Candel, personal property taxes, utilities, you see the decrease mainly to. Some. Depreciation of those things, but there is some information coming across, I guess, that the utilities are doing some grid upgrades. Which would go the other direction. So so some of those losses will be will maybe soften by some. Upgrades in the grid will get more valuation. We get very little pipeline money. We get some, so it really doesn't impact us that that much. So just. It's kind of a be aware at this point. Income tax. Now, this is one I. I need to change my assumption to fix that. I've I've downgraded my, our trend has been over five percent on income tax. Well, average between withholding and non withholding. Our non our withholding is down a little bit, so I I reduce this a little bit to about five percent versus six and a half percent growth. So it just again, it's a little bit conservative here on growth, and we still expect to see income growth on the income tax. Okay, grants and aid. This is. We don't know what's going to happen. The next two years, we see a nice boost in our unrestricted aid. That's because of enrollment growth and because of high performance. They're they're not funding the formula. We're essentially no longer on. It's a hundred percent implemented, but we're not on the formula and you'll and you'll see that. Drop off in in coming years. We'll be down to ten percent state share by twenty thirty. At what this rate, we're, you know, we're, you know, we're still around twenty percent. And with with this year's. With the performance piece and the enrollment piece, we're actually up, right? And is a percentage because of those two, those two pieces. Okay.
Now, if they were using updated base costs.
We'd be, we'd be up twenty percent. The other thing is, and this is, this is going to be tricky, and I just want to be really transparent about that. Our initial bus and seat numbers has has down significantly. The big graduating class come through, that bubble's gone. Our enrollment HBI group, correct me if I'm wrong, is down a little less than expected. So I've I've for this year alone, I've decreased our enrollment by a hundred students. Now, I still have our growth continuing at one percent in future years, but this year I was, this is showing, this is indicating a flip. Okay. Now, come October numbers, let's actually get the funded numbers and I'll know better. Because just because our enrollment's down, doesn't mean we're funded by a hundred less. Because it was a high school because some it's not always one to one. So it it's something to be aware of. Restricted grants and aid, that's that's student wellness, that's some special ed. And I'm back and forth on this. I'm a yo-yo, but threshold cost for special ed, again. We get we get mixed guidance sometimes in auto estate, how to handle this stuff. We're putting it back in restricted funds, even though it's it's a it's a reimbursement from a previous year. Shows up back here. That's why you see a little bit higher number this year. But and CTE is a small part of that. The biggest piece of that is gifted. And student wellness. So those are the two biggest pieces of the numbers, gifted student wellness and gift is based on student count. And same as student wellness, we have preferred students. Our allotment and, you know, restricted how we spend that. Unfortunately, now gifted is going to be a little more difficult to actually spend. Because we don't have, we have a gifted coordinator, correct nets, and they'll be able to buy some materials, but we don't have personnel in that. And student wellness is not hard. We don't have a hard time spending that because we're able to, for example, all our building. Health aids can be, that money can be used for that. So as long as we have a building health aids. State share, that's just, you know, homestead roll back. As long as they're willing to do that, because there are some conversations at the state. On, you know, phasing that out. So right now, I'm I'm not assuming there were significant changes. And the last one is all the revenues. The biggest piece of that is interest. And obviously, you see that earnings drop and as our cash balance drops. Last the revenue side. The expense side, going back to Dr. Anstett's plan earlier, here's our expenditure categories. Eighty two percent of our expenses personnel. Eleven percent is purchase services and special ed is the biggest portion of purchase services. Yeah, line by line. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna. One of the things that people have a hard time is where is those cuts? Where do they show up? Because it looks like, hey, we spent only forty six million salaries last year. You're slightly down. I don't see millions of dollars in cuts. Well, let me, this this graph, I think, shows it the best. This shows year over year salary expenditures by source. So. This is where we have, so the green is certified staff. The the red is classified, the orange is admin and the and the blue is all others, which are the supplements.
This is changed in salary.
This is changed. So if you if we had a normal year, this bar would be up here. Because just look, certified salaries year over year. We're at last, the last year, which almost two point four million dollars. Even with the reductions, we saw a slight increase in salaries for certified. All supplementals and all others down a half million, classified down three hundred thousand, I mean, admin down three hundred thousand, now four hundred thousand in. Admin. So. And obviously, as we, you can all, you can you can guess when you look forward, where are the opportunities when you talk about reductions? It's not, yes, it's still in these other areas, but it's not, it's not the same order of magnitude, right? So that's where that's kind of where cuts get buried because you have these inflationary built in increases for steps and education levels and all that kind of stuff. And the certified, when you have, you know, forty five, forty six million dollars in salary and thirty six million of it is certified staff, that's. That's what that drives the numbers. And I'm surely getting. So going back to, going back to salaries. Biggest number, there's no, we have a hiring freeze on twenty six beyond. There's no money built in the budget for new personnel. There are all the increases there are just due to steps and and negotiated increases.
In the last budget, you had put in, I thought, a couple of positions in the future for increased class size. Did you back those after the year enrollment numbers or?
There's a couple for 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 special ed, pairs and monitors, that kind of thing. And I think maybe one, I think it might be one certified position.
Just in case we.
Yeah. So but essentially, you know, a hundred thousand dollars. It's not, I mean, it's significant, but it's not. But essentially, it's a free, any hiring will only be for compliance reasons. Case loads for special ed primarily be driving. Benefits, again, here's, we do see it, you know, just a slight increase, no major changes. Right now, in the forecast, the five percent health insurance premium increase January first. Leading today with our actuary and stuff, and we will be able to, if not, twenty second, October, we'll bring the board where our premium increase is. I'm feeling really good about that five percent. I dare say it may be less.
Hoping.
And that and that less could be one percent could be a hundred thousand dollars savings, right, to the board's share of health insurance. So it is a, it is a big deal and 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 I can, we're all getting the health insurance discussion. We're looking at the numbers. We are, our health insurance last year, our claims were were really high, but we, many of those high claims are no longer on our insurance claim. But insurance and retirement are the two drivers there. Obviously, retirement is directly proportional to salaries and insurance is all based on premium increases. Again, here's the same chart year over year. Okay, yeah, we still saw a little bit of an increase, but you can see we've got a pretty good job, held the line on, you know, some of that salary benefit rolls into here and then. And some of these things, though, we just recognize that. It's it's enrollment, right? So we may have a staff member who retires with a single claim, but we get a young one who has a family. So those things are hard to, for the department judge. Purchase services, the. No, these are all inflationary increases, but most part of the fact, I'm still. I'm working on these numbers, had a meeting at the ESC last week. It looks like our special ed services with ESC are going to be down, which is a good thing. So I think I've captured all those savings, but there may be a little bit more savings there. It's just a number, mainly it's a number of paraprofessionals. We spent about three million dollars for ESC and special ed support. And again, here's here's the purchase, same thing, purchase services year over year. And that blue, if we just had inflationary growth, it would be up here. And so we've actually, so and this is also where gifted shows up. Thank you. Those features that we were that we were doing as a purchase service, that's what they're the biggest bulk of that negative blue is the the gifted.
Just like part of our gifted.
Part of our gifted, yeah, part of our gifted, we're we're direct employees of district. Part of it, we contracted through Lake Erie West ESC. And utilities are up. I'll just say right now, we're seeing higher, not utility, not usage, but rates. And I think some of us are seeing that at home too. Yeah. Supplying materials, this one, this had me baffled. I was like, why did it go up so much? And I find it because it was one of those dull moments. We, a lot of our school supplies, we bought through what we call student fees went into a a oh nine uniform supply fee. And we spent it out of there. So it was outside of general fund. We brought all that in general fund. So there's revenue that pretty well offsets all of that. It's just that we brought it in, we brought for for accounting reasons as well as accountability reasons, we brought that into general fund, whether it happened self or separately. And that's a discussion for another day if you want to go into why we did that, but. It it does make the buildings more accountable on the fees. Or having, I've actually had some conversations on with building principals on. I don't, we don't set their fees. They work together. Like elementars all have the same fees, but. We're finding out, you know, sometimes it's building principal preference on some things. I go, do you really need that? You know, your families are paying big fees. And you know, recognize anytime you have student fees, it's not a hundred percent, right? Free and reduced students, even though, you know, we're at fifteen. Thirteen to fifteen percent are not paying these fees. Capital outline, no real major changes here. We have one bus lease that matured. We started a new bus lease as you're aware of. And that's where the slight increase is. James and I are having ongoing conversations. We will present at the at the board meeting. I say a canyon capital plan. I want you to see what we're thinking is coming out of general fund, what is coming out of permanent improvement. It's it's not necessarily approving all projects. You're kind of approving the philosophy of what we're doing here. I will say this, we may have to buy, it's in, I have I have fifty thousand dollars in the in here to buy a van. What I caught, it looks like we have a need for another special needs van. Which is about ninety thousand dollars. So between permanent improvement and and. And general fund will, but we haven't, it hasn't been decided yet. We'll talk about about that.
Sorry if I missed. So what's your jump between twenty seven and twenty eight?
Mainly inflationary anticipation of.
Isn't that trailer?
Trailer really doesn't happen until twenty, oh, twenty eight. Yeah, that's trailer. Those are trailers. Yeah, we buy, we start buying trailers in twenty eight. Now, again, with enrollment, that could. That can, we have not done a real assessment on that. We need to. The big low, our, no major assumption changes. These are our house note two sixty four loan, which was well before my time. That last payment is in twenty thirty, so that one, that that goes away. And the rest of that is. The general fund share of our energy project, which, by the way, we just got a twenty five thousand dollar rebate on. So that was nice. It came back in. And then finally, other objects, that's mostly fees we pay to the county treasurer, county auditor and the state for collecting their taxes. That's the biggest bulk of that.
Slap in the face if they're going up.
Well, the thing is, as tax, as your tax collection goes up, those fees go up. So more property like the, with the, when the levy passes, those fees will go up because they'll be collecting more than eleven million. And they even, now, we don't have a high level of liquidities in this county, at least in our district, but they they get five percent of liquidities. So again, going back to the numbers. So, again, going back to the numbers with the levy. This is, you know, so, again, no restoration of staff. We end up, you know, obviously, in the out years, we're, we're gonna have, have to have some serious conversations on what the next step is, but, you know, we do have the next couple of years to be able to plan and work towards, you know, what we do in the future. Um, I believe this forecast is, um, conservative in, in that it's reasonable, the biggest, my biggest concern is the property tax reform. And that, if you guys, if you watch the news, that can take any number of forms. Um, we expect that the, um, the, the ballot initiative on eliminating all property tax will happen November of twenty-six. And of course, if it gets there, um, I don't know what I can do. So, again, um, slightly higher revenue expenses forecasted for twenty-six. Again, the levy, four and a half million dollars reductions, just maintain sixty-two cascades and, um, property tax reform. So, that's, that's kind of the bottom, that's kind of the bottom line on this. So, going back to our original conversation, um, four and a half million, I believe, is our bottom. Can't ask for any less reductions than that, but we, we think we need to be closer to six million to give us a little bit more space on, on that end. Um, and plus, again, I think, you, you, you put six million dollars in cuts, you're gonna go after it, but there's no, always a period here, you can get all of it, because some of it's, you know, personnel-related or every, now, we're gonna have a bunch of retirements this next year, that could shift things. But those are all unknowns. So, I stop.
Yeah, and again, I think, the process you go through to come up with your assumptions, always solid, you need your reaction. You're probably more optimistic about the state of the economy in the out years than I probably am. Yeah, like you said, it's a crystal ball, though, so who knows what happens in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine? When, when you've got, you're pulling through with the increase in income tax collections through those years, the property tax value, the property valuation through those, those out years, maybe, maybe not, but they also don't really move. Whatever I would disagree with, twelve versus ten, or eight, or, not gonna move the needle on this, so. Surely gonna give us more thought, I'm sure we're talking about it more in finance, but nothing here jumps out at me.
Yeah, they're, they're, we're reappraisal next year, this, with counties, this is, conference in twenty-five are still thirty percent. But so, across the state, you know, it's still really up there.
Yeah, and I think if things hold up in the next twelve months, it's, it's, it's beyond that.
And people realize that our twenty-four percent on the, on the reappraisal of the year was small compared to many counties. Any other reaction, what are, public reaction, shoot for six million versus four and a half in reduction?
So, let's say with the forecast right now, any other questions or comments on the assumptions or where we are with the forecast right now? Now, that's, sorry, I just wanted to make sure we were good with the numbers.
I took, I took silence as I'm moving, moving on, so. It's much more split.
Um, so, we have the four point five million, which in previously discussed, there's a comment to six million, is what I hear? Discussion thoughts about that? I'm looking at the, back in slide eight, you know, kind of looking at our deficit spending that we're already doing, knowing that we are borrowing now six and a half million at least from our reserves for this year, right? I'm very cognizant of that compounding effect, and I, it's helpful to understand where we got the four point five million from. I'm sure that that would be the rationale I would use to determine that number right now. So, I, I appreciate the opportunity to kind of open up this conversation again. What, what's everybody thinking?
I, yeah, I would, um, like to see what it looks like with six million dollars in cuts. My previous comments about, you know, mine, certainly about the state of the economy, some other things, uh, impact these later years. I don't like leaving a future board with just sixteen days worth of cash outstanding, and at the end of what we're looking at here, that doesn't sit well at all with me. But also say, if you come back and we see what those six million are, you know, but we reserve the rate to say, across the Rubicon, there's certain things, between the four and a half and the six layer, that I don't like.
What would we, I mean, what would, I guess I'd look at it as kind of a layer thing, right? This is what we need to do to get to four and a half, is to do additional things that we need to do to get to six.
Yeah.
And then we can look at it that way, and we've kind of got whole scenarios that we can take a look at it and say, A or B.
One thing this slide shows you, too, is the impact following the reductions. So, you notice that the following year, even though we're kind of back as business is normal, you don't see the same trend of increase because of the cascading effect. So, you know, the reductions in this year will look similar to here or even more, but then that also lowers these bars a little bit, you don't see the same growth. It's just, it's just the, the impact of that compounding.
You're talking about, what's wrong?
I want to be careful that we don't get stuck on the employee side with, well, you hit this number. Um, I think, yes, there should be a target minimum, but I think basically, we need to look at going down the state minimum and making sure that we have a prioritized rank list, because, you know, whether it's the state's cash, or who knows what else coming down the pipe, I, I think our level of that, that we're cutting at, it could, it could have a flaw, so it just depends on what happens. There's certainly so much uncertainty on our property tax, that, that just, not only leaving the picture more of a brain supercontinent as well, with that little cash, I mean, there's just nowhere to move there. And I just, I think all that we can do to at least set up in the next couple of years, I think our target should at least be, so that we've got a feed under us for a couple of years, before we have to come back to over to them, especially if that option drops out. There's so many of those sitting down there right now on tax reform that are very frightening, very frightening.
I, I appreciate, I, I appreciate the optimism, the outlook, you know, put it back in the revenue to twenty-four, um, as planned, but I, that's a piece where I'm, I, I'm not as optimistic that we're gonna retain as much property tax. But what I can't even think about, putting this on the ballot, to the way everyone, every municipality and state organizations in the country, but I'm worried about that next year.
Oh, no, I was gonna say, I mean, I, I think some of those disaster scenarios, though, six million would cover them. Yeah, we, we can't plan for that, because if they truly do the property tax, the, all of this, you might as well just hit the lead and start building a new spreadsheet.
Your forty million, thirty-five, thirty-six million goes away immediately.
Yeah.
We're, we're, we're closed.
Yes. Yeah, the buildings are open and empty, and there's a new way to deliver education.
Superintendent Treasurer showed the work, that's about it.
That's about it? They're gonna become a property management company.
But I guess, just to be clear on this particular slide here, right? These true data cash assume four and a half million in production?
They do not.
Okay, so, four and a half million would move twenty-seven to well more of the sixty.
Make it sixty.
And then twenty-twenty-eight is going to be the boiling time here.
That'll be a couple, it would, yeah, it would be, it's probably, it'd end up being, um, it'd probably end up, you know, maybe, you know.
Eight million or a hundred million.
No, it'll be less, it'll be less than that, but it'd end up, it would be, you'd have some cash left.
Yeah.
Okay, but essentially, you'd be out of cash. We would, we'd be borrowing, make payroll in January and February, and then, okay, and then just leave it there.
So, yes, and then it's, it's really about what's the number look like in, in twenty-eight, because in theory, we don't actually have to make any cuts. And we'd be fine in twenty-seven, now we have to change the board policy on sixty days, but that's our decision to make.
Well, the board policy says that we're, if we're projecting less than sixty days, Superintendent Treasurer has to present a plan to the board to get us to sixty days.
But we can change the policy, right?
But the, but the board doesn't have to act on it, we just have to present a plan.
Exactly. Uh, by the way, I'm not necessarily advocating, I'm just.
No, no, no.
No, 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 but it's, but it's, but it's an option that's on the table, you know, should we choose to take it? So, I, I think that's the, but again, I, I think, but if you look at six, right, you'll get, what, three next year, you'll get, and then, so then, you're, you're still not gonna be in twenty-eight, even in six, you're not gonna be sixty-three days cash, not even close. So, the, I mean, the reality is, the, the only way out of this is, either we, you know, we don't pass the levy this year, then there'll have to be another one next year, and then I think the real conversation is, and I think this gets into the income versus some of those conversations, but that'll be the, for the future, I guess.
Which I think is gonna be one of the solutions in the future to the reduction of property taxes, whatever the sort of cuts. If not, all income tax based on, as we're feeling, all common.
What, what is, what is interesting, um, this district, if you look at our, um, discounts, our homestead rollback and stuff like that, our homestead, which is the, the over, the over sixty-five lower income, is very, very small. We don't have a ton in that category. Our retired folks, I'm not saying it's, that minimum's pretty low, but they're, they're, they're a little bit higher income than a lot of areas, so, that kind of stuff, those kind of reforms don't necessarily help our seniors as much as other things would.
We hesitate to ask this question, I'll ask it. Um, have we done the thought exercise on if we just stripped everything down to absolute bare minimum requirements, what is our, what is our expenditure?
I think that's what his price has reflected, starting to pick me back.
Well, we did, we did the state minimum exercise and what we would look like, but I don't know if we, we didn't, like, forecast that out, like.
Yeah, actually, it might be just interesting to kind of know what's that floor look like, right? Does that seventy-seven become fifty-seven? Or does the seventy-seven become thirty-seven, or is it become sixty? What's kind of that floor for the district on expenditure standpoint?
Seven and two.
Yeah, well, at, at some point, we're gonna hit that lower bound on, this is the, if you just basically got everything down to state minimum, maximum class sizes, you can have only mandated requirements, you know, that kind of gives you the maximum cuts available.
I think as long as those numbers give a really clear explanation.
Yeah, a hundred percent, yeah.
Because you're talking about access to education.
Yeah.
Busing specifically. I'm gonna presume, getting ahead of my skis, we're talking about student safety, both physical and mental, while we're in state.
Oh, hell, you know.
It's, it's terrible place to be, right?
Yeah.
No, no SROs, no building health aids, right? No AP classes.
To this role model's point, it's a real clear communication here, for, really, really good way of that exercise.
Yeah, the honors diplomas don't happen, all those kinds.
Because there are some people that will say, fine.
Need state minimum day, like, you're, you're talking, it would be unrecognizable.
Yeah.
And, again, moving on, because we will not be a hypercoming this year.
No.
But we, we can do that. We, you know, when you do that exercise, I don't know where that number ends up, but, um, we're still gonna, you know.
Well, that's gonna be an exercise, honestly, that'll be an exercise we have to do if the levy is rejected in that, 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 into that conversation. Because that'll be what we have to, we have to talk about.
So, do I, what's, um, I'm trying to get, what's the assumption the board on our four, four point five versus, you know, six million target? What's, what's your feeling?
I like the idea of the, you know, we're working, I think the plan is going to four point five, but I think seeing that tiered list of what else would be on that for the additional one and a half million. I think everything has to be ranked, too. All the buildings should have their stuff ranked, which I think we'll get, if they do the four point five, that's stuff we have.
And recognize, when you say all, all buildings, the elementaries are all gonna be the same. We try to keep curriculum consistent, on offense across the building, for equity, for lots of reasons, but equity reasons being one of them. And then, and then, we already know that, that the burden's gonna be at the high school right now, you know.
Can I just clarify? So, you would like to see what the reductions would look like at four point five, and then what they would look like at six million?
Well, I think we're, I think we've got the tier of all reductions, right? If it adds up to six and a half million, we're gonna have priorities on them, on them already. So, if we get to five million and we're satisfied that we don't want to cut these one and a half, then we just don't, we don't use, we don't use them. That's what they're saying.
I'm, I'm just thinking, like, to turn it into a presentation, like, like.
Yeah, look at it as, these are the, these are the cuts to get to the four and a half.
Mm-hmm.
These are the additional cuts to get to.
Six, okay.
And we break it up now.
Okay.
And there's probably not a lot of board discussion at four and a half, unless there's something really odd, but I can't expect that. I think the discussion would happen at that one point five.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I do think that one point five will start to cut into what we become minimums.
Okay.
So, we may be able to keep, for instance, we may be able to keep high school bus transportation out of the four point five to make sure everyone can get to school, but at that one point five, my guess is the transportation's gonna be in there, then that's gonna be a discussion of, of the value of high school transportation.
That's a discussion I want to have, because candidly, what I'm hearing is that we're no longer talking about four and a half, we are really talking about six, but I want to hear, we're talking about six.
I mean, are we looking for a list of seven that we debate to get to six? Is that what you're looking for, or?
Well, that's what I kind of mean by going to the state minimum. See that we have that little room, and we can say, hey, this is what our priority is. You know, the building principals might have different priorities than what we feel is important.
Yeah, and I think it really comes down to what's the gap between state minimum and current state, and if that gap is twenty million dollars, then we've got a lot of optionality on how we do four and a half or six. If the gap is seven million dollars, we don't have a lot of optionality.
Do we, I mean, when that, when we've done that, do we have a dollar figure on what that looks like?
We have the reduction figure, but we, we haven't, like, built it into, like, a forecasted, forecasted out, but can I ask, like, what would your, going, there's not necessarily, like, a state minimum class size? What would your class size threshold be if we're doing this exercise? Because that will, I need to know. Like, what are you, are you thinking thirty kids in a class, twenty-seven kids in a class? Like, what are you thinking? And, yeah, so, so, because that.
Provided that right at that, at the last meeting, and then she kind of had the, if we go above this number, we start to get worried. Is that a reasonable starting point? I don't remember what the numbers were, though, they were different by.
Working at this.
We already have one.
Okay, second question is how much higher to pass a class.
There's no, there's, there's, correct me if I'm wrong, um, educators, but the, there's not a, a number, we know that there's a number on the effectiveness of classroom size, and like, lower grades, smaller numbers, et cetera. And, and, but there's, I mean, contractually, we have some targets we try to hit, but it's not binding in that, can't. So, um, and, and from a state funding standpoint, the formula is based on, it's considered optimal class size. Now, we're not, I would say, on the formula, but we, we use those class sizes to inform kind of some of our, our thought process.
Because I think that, that's a key, if we, you know, when we talk about state minimums, are we talking about the formula class size? Are we just saying every class can be thirty? I mean, that, that, is that knowing that eighty-two percent of our cost is in personnel, that, so I'm not sure what state minimums mean, I guess.
Well, class size don't mean anything.
Yeah, there's.
Class size, I'm talking more like, you know, in, in your elementary school, it could be your teacher teaching gym and, and music and art. I mean, that, that goes back to state minimums, all those extras, not a pretty place to go, but it, it's possible.
I, I'm personally not interested in the state minimum conversation yet. I, I just, I, I believe that this community values education, and that the task we've put in is the minimum we're asking for. So, I'm not looking for state minimums, I'm looking for that, maybe up to seven million list that if four and a half to seven, we cut. And I think in that, we're gonna see what the minimum starts to look like. I, I, I think until we, I think we're asking, to ask for that at this point, I'm not sure we have time, but.
I think that was the foundation, though, from what, from where you started, if I'm wrong, but what I see on the spreadsheets that we're working on is keeping in mind what that state minimum is.
Mm-hmm.
And saying, what's missing? And saying what's missing here that keeps your school safe, that keeps kids healthy, that keeps. So because hopefully we never get to that state minimum, but there are certain things that we certainly will find a way to compromise on. When we think about the number of kids that we have that have health needs that are significant, are we willing to walk away from health aids? Are we willing, so those things have been layered back onto the state minimum um, by principals. But still aiming for that number that we're all trying to get to, which right now is about six and a half million dollars, six million dollars somewhere in there. And again, we're gonna shoot for a target, but we may not hit like we say, you know, when we put it in our spreadsheet, we throw in those numbers. But a retirement can throw that off, somebody not retiring, anticipate retiring can throw that off. Um, there's a lot of, there's just a lot of given there. I think you have to shoot for a little higher number to make sure that you get to. If sixty days is what we're after, then we've got to shoot for the number that gets us to sixty days safely. And doesn't leave to your play this burden.
Sixty days, sixty days where?
I think if we are at, well, it's not going to be before twenty twenty-eight, that's for sure, right? So.
But we, I guess we're.
If we cut in twenty twenty, in fiscal year twenty twenty-seven, or in twenty-six, right, we're in fiscal year twenty-six now, we make those cuts in twenty twenty-seven. We're in sixty days there, but it's not continuing hard from now.
Yeah, I think that's the, but I think the four and a half gets you to sixty in twenty-seven.
It gets you to sixty in twenty-seven and gives you a few a few, it would not be negative, sorry, negative in twenty-eight, it just would be essentially. Move well in our section, right?
And I don't think there's a dollar number you can cut that would get you to sixty in twenty-eight, is that what?
Oh, well, there is.
Wow. Mathematically, there is, but.
It'd be it'd be it would be an interesting exercise to to know what um, that that minimum would be. Because I'm guessing, I'm only guessing, that you're looking at, that's what you're talking, that's the order of magnitude you're talking about past twenty-seven. Right?
We'd get to that major cut next year and then you'd be at state minimum.
And it may not be without.
To start with that and layer back in, which is what principals are doing now, layering back in what we would consider our minimum, having health aid, right? Having counselors, having, you know, all of the things that keep our kids safe.
And what I'm hearing is you think that all of that can still exist if it was six million.
Some of that can, yes, some.
And I want to see it. I agree.
Yeah, yes, exactly right. That's the that's what we're gonna have to wrestle with.
We thought four and a half, we think that, I mean, again, we put six out there now, this meeting's put six, so we need to have a good conversation on this.
The levels that expectations a little bit, just recognize that six million, there still could be individual items that are at state minimum, just not across the board. Okay, so.
There's really these class sizes.
Right, so just recognize that we're we're inching that inching that way to maybe pick and choose where we are at state minimum.
Yeah, if I hear six, it's still thirty-five kids in a classroom, I'm probably not gonna be micro grinning at that.
But maybe where they are in fiscal twenty-eight, if we can't get that, if we can't crush it, we need to down on that.
So Randy, it'd probably be useful for us at least to get an update to this twenty twenty-five forecast where you layer in four and a half million and six million? To see what the true days cash starts to look like in twenty-eight.
Yeah, I've thought about that. I'm not, I gotta figure out how to do that because it's um, depending on the split between personnel and other things. But I probably not reading this format, but I I'm.
I don't really want to do it just because it'd be, you know, it'd be interesting to see where twenty-eight comes in at, right? Because, you know, I don't, I don't, I think even in six, I think twenty-eight's gonna be a bad number. I might, you're probably gonna be closer to ten to get twenty-eight.
Well, I my my, again, I I think I need to do that exercise exactly because I think in twenty-eight, you'd still be, we reduce in twenty-seven, you don't pass the levy in November of twenty-six. You're making significant cuts again in twenty-eight.
Yeah.
And what? And and I just want to, I I think that's a, it'd be really helpful to see that. I also want to continue to say that my interest in looking at these numbers and thinking about cuts isn't just about true cash days, but it's that future concern of what are we? What are we leaving the district, what kind of savings are we leaving the district with? Um, different position, but even bigger, like how if we don't pass the levy in November, we really are into a question of what is the value in this field of that education back way now?
Yeah, and we don't get to a good true cash day, not the realistically. It is about the experience in the classroom.
Definitely, you'll see all of that because we can't talk about one of them.
And I think Susan, you're right, sixty true cash days is just a, that's just a number. Well, it's a it's a benchmark, it's just a benchmark is, but it's not.
And it's not that great of a number.
No.
No. Great, we're we're trying to get to bad, you know.
Yes, we're just powerful as bad, yes.
Well, it goes back to some folks that said, oh, why can't we be like Anthony Wayne and Fiat Money? We can't plan on Fiat Money.
And you spend money to tomorrow.
Sure, get some table conversations.
Okay. All right. What I've heard is that we've asked for the six million with a priori prioritization. I think at that point, if we still have questions that maybe we could cut further into what is a state minimum, we can certainly say, no, we want to go to seven million in cuts. Because we think, um, we really want to see what that looks like. But I think at this point with two weeks, really just a week left before this has to be rolled out, that I I think at this point to increase to the six million prioritization and six and a half, that gives us even more discussion points.
Why don't um, and we can fill in our presentation for the twenty-second, we talk about reductions, exactly what Mr. Anderson's asking for. See if I can build a spreadsheet to show that cash flow with those in there. It would, I wouldn't call it, it's gonna be as good as I can get at that point. You can show us that maybe those those impacts are a little bit better. I'll take these numbers as a base and I'm gonna extend them out with those with those kind of reductions. If that helps.
Sorry, can I ask just a clarifying question? So you just want to see the six million or do you want to see four and a half million and the six million?
I joined with the six million to to be at for this discussion.
I I think the prioritization is what gives us the four and a half. These are what we would cut first, and then here's what the next one and a half to two million.
Yeah, really, it's the six million and the prioritization.
But the prioritization.
Does that help? No.
Yeah, we just have a go back to have some additional conversations and we've got about a week, so.
Yeah, times.
Mm-hmm.
Any other?
So um, this is a procedure, just so make sure the board's comfortable with this. On the regular board meeting, right, the five-year forecast, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna put it in the presentation. I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time on, we're talking maybe on finance if we have time, but are the board okay with that? So we're having, I mean, probably we're missing the public facing side of it. You know, I'll do a few slides, but not probably the same level that we did here. Watch it. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I'm meet your your needs in terms of being able to.
We've been in the five point one. That's the point, you know, six point one is slightly changing the board meeting. Does anyone want to call?
I just have a question. Is the six point one, is that normal?
Yes.
And it was just left out?
Well, we don't always know, yes, yes, just look. This has been, since I've been here, we've had this period. Um, it goes back to the state minimum. We've got so many offerings for our kids that in order to get these problems, six period, we're there. Typically typically cheaper than obviously than hiring another full-time staff. They're outside, they're after the.
Marching bands after school. While it's two safety rings.
Our our students want more than, some want more than what we offer during the day.
Well, a lot of times there, our kids are taking, we have a course during the day, and so it's always, if you put somebody in the middle of the day, then they can't take any steps. Or whatever, you know, so that's that's why those are not outside of days because definitely there's a lot of kids, same kids, meaning, yeah, they get watching. Especially in big high schools where there's a lot of moving parts and masters got that, but they are all considered classes.
Mr. Mr. Mankey, Mr. Beddington?
Yes.
And Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Let's go over and know him.
Yes. We have our items for four discussion.
Just a part of a ratio, so by asking if we move to the eighteen, okay, we'll put that note in the file.
We have, um, we have a statement that we've both got to watch here. So at the September board meeting, we'll go, we'll go to Brent's work in the home improvement presentation, we're asking that to go. Because we'll have a lot of other healthy things to discuss at night, but he is, he'll give us an overview of all the areas that we're celebrating, the areas that we see future work. So we'll get that presentation. We have a major. I yeah, I think we got it. I mean, honestly, I could probably call it on my email. Happily data heavy.
That's where in the morning he'll probably tell you what the numbers are. Probably the next thing.
I think it's. Four year, four year one, I mean, he's got five. So I guess on the back, he's got the, it's always always interesting to see how the classes. Well, yeah, remembering that, you know, our homeworks, that sixth grade is in sixth grade and sixth grade, but sixth grade is seventh grade and eighth grade. So follow those homeworks. Sometimes you can really see trends in those homeworks.
It's a disapply by the individual, they have individual test results right now that they're not working on. The state report part of that, the complicity. Yeah.
Is um, knocked out. It actually will be out the day that we previously were scheduled for the board meeting. So I was really breathing down his neck that night to get it done. But now he's got a whole nother week to prepare it, so, yes. But I think it's good to get out there and but there's a lot to celebrate. I love that in their homeworks, so, yeah.
Any other questions, discussion? No objections, I'll do the meeting. No objections, we're adjourned.